For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of August 20th, 2018. Call the order, please.
Hess.
Here.
Johnson is excused. Nielsen?
Yes, here.
Noack?
Here.
And Walgore?
Here. Please transfer plate.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications or additions to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, open session and closed session of August 6, 2018? Any changes, issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda or non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address the council. This is the only time during the meeting this evening that you're allowed to. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. On the consent agenda this evening, bills to be allowed in the amount of $399,537.93. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Hess.
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walgore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Nothing on the agenda down to item number 12, communications and petitions. Target Alpena Development Corporation Annual Report for 2017 and '18. Jim Claritch is here.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. Also like to say thanks for the investment that the city makes in the community. I don't know if you hear that enough, everybody, you know, you always hear the complaints, but you don't hear the thank you, so I want to say thank you to everybody for the investments the city continues to give the community as well as in us. So I'll jump into activity summary real quick. So we've continued from the APC, former APC site, we've continued to market that site over the past three years as a mixed-use development possibility and its potential. And we're getting closer to, we're attracting some interest in it. We are getting closer to, I hope, to a hearing of proposal, and hopefully we're just waiting on that to be submitted to us. As stated in a previous report in our semi-annual report, one of the things that we've been looking at too is what it would take to accommodate some other large-scale developments on the riverfront, how those might affect parking in the future, really looking outward 10 years, and whatever that looks like, is parking appropriate? Are streets appropriate? Do we need a deck? All of that kind of things that we're taking in, looking at with the city, with Adam's office on what those needs might be. In regards to Commerce Park, the industrial park, we sold, I believe it was, three lots this past year. I think we have four left. Only we're down to four, so that's really good, and we have had a recent inquiry on one of those. We've also met with several developers regarding other developments in and around the city, most of them having to do with attached housing and mixed use, so various, just various sites around the city like McCoy's, et cetera. And we'll keep you updated on that. We've also been a key point of contact over the last year with AMC Theaters. We established a relationship, obviously, with Carmike when AMC bought them. We kind of went through a quiet time for about a year, but we've been re-engaged with them a little bit. We've had discussions with them on several subjects, including signing, our signage that everybody's aware of and that kind of thing, and the closing and the marketing right now with the Royal Knights. So there has been interest in the Royal Knights, there have some people look at it. That's kind of where it stands right now, is people will continue to assess it. We've assisted a lot of businesses in the local area in a variety of ways, mostly pertaining to helping them develop long-term strategies or longer-term strategies, business expansions, and possible relocation options. Of course, I think you looked at our scope services agreement for this year. It also included looking at the possibility of adding a second hotel downtown, and we are working on that. In addition to that, we're really taking a look at US 23 North as to, you know, what that might be, whether that ends up being commercial, industrial, or whatever the, I say, is the most appropriate use for that property might be. From a, I will jump into the area, like for instance, I know Pina Township, and I will say we have shown the Kmart, the vacant Kmart numerous times, both as a commercial operation, potential commercial, as well as the possibility to repurpose that. So those showings will continue. And then I also put in here earlier this year, we assisted the order of the former MC or Staples Building on getting Harbor Freight in there, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Doralta County, one of the things that we're looking at, at the airport, is the amount of property right now that's there, what would appropriate use for it be? For instance, on the west side of Airport Road, that property is basically ready for development. It's pretty much shovel-ready, it's about 120 acres in total, and we're taking a look at, you know, what would be appropriate use for that and who we might reach out to. Obviously, with the significance of that airport complex, you know, the first thing that comes into my mind is aerospace companies and that kind of thing. So we're going down that path and contacting people that we feel will help us in that Also, we participated on Joint Land Use Study Committee for the CRTC. I think Greg also participated on that in the surrounding area, which will help guide future development in the entire area. The Unmanned Aerial Systems Project continues to move forward under the leadership of Jim Mikowski, and we, and I can tell you that it is moving in a positive direction and making headway. I wanted to jump into a couple of things for the Small Business Development Activity Summary. So if you look at your packages, you'll see in Alpena County, we had six business starts, 29 jobs created, 1.522 invested in capital creation. The City of Alpena, which is three of those, we had three business starts, 14 jobs, and just under three-quarters of a million dollars in capital creation in the city of ours. The Chamber of Commerce, so the Chamber, we have a very strong working relationship with the Chamber, and they've been very focused on workforce and educational attainment initiatives. And that really started in the school system a couple of years ago, where they got in, started teaching kids soft skills that has evolved into job shadowing opportunities that have gone on to include job opportunities, et cetera. That initiative continues for 2018 and 2019. They've also started a video series called "The Young Successful" in Alpena, which you can believe that's on Facebook. The Chamber and Target are also primary partners in the Marshall Plan Committee here for the area. That was a program for job training and really looping the school systems together with the major employers in town to create a vibrant atmosphere and a working relationship between, a better relationship between all of those entities, and we're working on that now. The Chamber continues also to be a one-stop operator contract for Michigan Works, and so basically they do the evaluation of Michigan Works' performance. Miscellaneous items that don't really show up in the primary report is we completed our Michigan Economic Development Corporation-sponsored retention calls across Delcona, Alpena, and Presqueal Counties this past year. We participated in the new jail committee. And I mentioned earlier, we participate on the Regional Airport Joint Land Use Study Committee. And in addition, we've been asked to help to market a lot of properties around the area, and although we are not a real estate company, by saying I'm not a broker or anything like that, we are working with Realtors in the area on how to appropriately market those properties and to who, and give them leads, and you know, that relationship is growing. Anyway, that's kind of a quick summary of the activities over the past six months. But I wanted to also touch on a quick overview of, you know, value up and above activities. Because I think everybody's had immediate migrates, is what's new, what's coming, where is that next piece of land getting developed, or what buildings getting torn down, all of those other things. And really, when you look at it, it's a substantial list, when you look at the whole area of the activities. I wanted to bring your attention, kind of, it's how far we've come in the last five years. And what that is, is from an EDC standpoint, what things have we added that didn't exist before? And I'll give you a snapshot of that. And what that is, is I look at it and say, we're the only EDC in northern Michigan with an aggressive business attraction strategy. Most communities are reactive, we will react, but most of our work is in attraction strategy. We're the only EDC in our region making calls to developers across diverse markets. The only EDC in northern Michigan providing location assistance to interested companies. The only EDC in northern Michigan providing consultation and agency mediation services for developers. We're the only EDC in northern Michigan providing site plan development services for developers, and that's just started, where Adam and I actually laid one out for a customer, where they didn't have to go internally and do it. Adam and I put that together for them and presented it back to them. We're the only EDC really in northern Michigan providing airline recruitment and retention services to the county. We're, I certainly this, we're the only EDC in northern Michigan that's captured and provided long-term strategic support for an unmanned aerial systems project. And that list goes on, and you know, whether it is site attraction, working with major utilities on port operations, or air operations, or what can we do? I mean, because those guys are frontline when people are looking at stuff, we're involved in that. We also, I think you probably heard that we had gotten through with, in partnership with Presqueal Power, Wolverine Power, and Target, we were awarded a Rockefeller Grant through the Post-Road Foundation to do a fiber-to-the-home study, which we'll do throughout their service area, which right now, if you look at it, there's a lot of fiber, there's backbone that runs all over the streets, all alongside of the roads, but it's really not useful or anything until someone plugs into it. And no one can really figure out how to plug into that fiber, because I mean, there's a risk associated and a cost associated with doing that, but it makes complete sense from a utility standpoint, if somebody, you know, if they're already running wires, maybe they run wires. And I don't know what that looks like at the end of the day, maybe the cost is prohibitive, maybe not, but at the same time, it's something that we should look at, because that commerce is important to the area. Some of the other things that we're doing, one of the things that we, I was very proud of over the past year, it has to do with the owners, Redwood Realty Group out of New York that owns the MC Sports, or they're called CMC, the Harbor Freight Building. And one of the things that they did is, at the end of the day, we worked a lot with those guys, and you never know how people see you, right? How are you really viewed by different people? And one of the things that they wrote, they wrote a letter to our board that basically said this, it said that they were the best EDC that they had worked with across 15 states and over 40 municipalities. And that says a lot coming from, you know, somebody who's got an office in Manhattan. And so we took great pride in that. You know, we're only one of two economic development corporations in northern Michigan providing RLF and MRLF small business loans, and we're the only EDC managing two funded loan portfolios in our region. From an SBDC metric standpoint, we continually lead roughly for the last five years in new business starts, capital formation, jobs created, and number of clients across our Other cool things that have happened, we're the only EDC really in our Region 3 that's presented to the state's MEDC, Michigan Strategic Fund Board, on two different occasions. I think the one was for the hotel, the second one was for Alpena Furniture, and both were successful. Again, the only EDC in Region 3 providing retention call services across three interregional counties, and the only EDC in Region 3 capable of representing, what I say, clients and developers to a government entity without them being present. Lastly, just happened last week, is the MEDC asked us to attend and represent our region at a Site Selector Conference in Traverse City, which we did for three days. We represented the eight-county area, and I think that that says a lot, when the MEDC attraction team has that much faith in you to present 13 site selectors, I think it was, from across the country. So it was pretty cool, it was a pretty cool thing for us to be able to do. So that's kind of it. From our standpoint, I just want to thank you again for all of your support, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Jim. I don't have any questions. You're always very accessible and work well with Greg and Adam, so I usually don't have to wait till a meeting to ask anything, but I certainly appreciate the update. Anybody else have questions or anything?
I do have one more out of curiosity than anything else.
Sure.
Projects that might happen north of town, development north of town, how much will the wetlands that are north of town impact some of the projects that you might be interested in?
Yeah, the north of town, they'll be, let's say this, they'll be directly impacted by the amount of wetlands. I mean, we have a lot of wetlands in the area, and we have to be conscious of that. But at the same time, Adam, Adam is, you know, a lot, and Greg, their expertise and Rich, their expertise in navigating that and mitigation and all of that kind of stuff will play a big role in, I'll say, not getting around it isn't the right word, but navigating, navigating the, you know, that type of problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Awesome.
Well, thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need to receive and file anything else?
I think so, right?
Yeah, it'd be best, because it's part of the contract. I move we receive and file the report.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, new business, 2018 city goose hunt, Don Gilbert.
Good evening. As directed by the manager, I have gathered some information for council to make a decision regarding whether or not to hold a goose management hunt again this year. The Department of Public Works employees did their goose collecting again this spring and had lower results than the last few years in the number of nests disturbed and eggs collected. In 2016, there were 122 eggs collected from 21 nests and 123 eggs collected from 24 nests in 2017. This year, DPW collected 71 eggs from 13 nests on two different occasions. They went out on May 4th and the 16th. The heavy snowfall April may have had some effect on the success of the egg collection this year due to the geese returning and nesting a little later than normal, and all that. The snow we got in April elevated the water levels and would have washed out nests on its own. Local goose populations in the city of Alpena seem to be lower this year than last in the month of June and until the middle of July. Some people commented to me, the goose hunt must have worked last year, they were not encountering as many on the bike path, by path, as they did last year. After that, however, the numbers gradually increased as young geese became able to fly and move to town from out-of-town areas, the other lakes and things like that, behind the smog line. There appears to be between 100 and 150 geese in various locations throughout the city right now. They're dispersed in groups from one to five dozen. As fall approaches, they'll be joined by the early migrating geese from the surrounding area and from Hudson Bay. The research shows that by the first two weeks of September, the geese, they call them molts, I guess that's the young geese that are born in other places, they get up and they start moving back to Michigan. The geese that, the eggs get collected from by DPW, or a pair of geese that aren't successful in nesting for some reason, you know, it could be the water level raised and flooded their nest out, they don't re-nest, they leave, make it all go back to Hudson Bay. They put radio collars on them, so it's pretty well documented what they do. They stay up there until they lose their feathers or molt, and they start flying back south. So they usually start arriving back, like I said, the first couple weeks of September, summer probably already here now. But the success in reducing local goose populations lies in the numbers of local nesting geese that are removed through hunting. This reduces the number that will return and nest next year. Nothing will eliminate them all, nor should that be the goal, but rather keeping local goose numbers at a reasonable level to reduce the nuisance interactions between them and between people. Last year, we harvested 99 geese in the two days hunted. If allowed, we'll be using the same hunters as last year, and hunters will sign a waiver statement, as has been done in the past prior to the hunt beginning. This year, we have received permission again from the county to hunt the Fairgrounds property as the geese there are causing a mess in the camping areas and bike paths along the river now. Hunting at the Fairgrounds would take place on the interior track with shooting towards the river. We would also plan on hunting Michikvis Beach, as we did last year. We would not hunt on Besser Lake. We would plan on holding two hunts in the early goose season this year. The first would be on Friday, September 7th, followed by a second on Friday, September 14th. Hunts will again end at 12 noon, as they did last year. Costs for conducting both hunts will be less than $800. Bike path gates will be closed and/or barricades erected to close off the hunting areas, as well as press releases and signage has been done in the past. No campers will be allowed along the river camping sites during the hunt. All this, of course, is dependent on council direction and whether or not to hold a hunt. So we are asking if council wants to authorize a goose management hunt again this year under the guidelines outlined above, or would rather not have one. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Why wouldn't you be hunting Besser Lake? Isn't that normal?
Yeah, it was, and we did it mostly, they didn't, they never really got many geese there, and if you, when you have an issue, I look at where we, have we had issues, I'm not counting about the windows that got shot out by camper, but I mean, just where geese get wounded and wind up, you know, at the college or alongside of the road. And so when I look back through my notes from last year, there was four or five geese that were shot at on Besser Lake, and I imagine were a little bit too high up, so they get hit, and it takes a while for them to bleed enough to get weak, and so they fly across the street, so they wind up on the soccer field, or over by the brewery, things like that. And so with the small number that we got, and the fact that, you know, probably aren't going to take as many geese this year as last because of the numbers, again, it depends on the molt, if they get here now, but I didn't think it was necessary to do that.
And I think that's been a fairly recent site that we've utilized just in these.
We've only, we never hunted it when we first did it. We did it the previous two years, and I mean, they got, I think, four geese one year, and they got 11 the next time we did one.
Okay. Good to know.
We would have, the guy with the dog, though, I would pay him to go around, and so if there were geese, you know, they would chase them off that drop. You know, the same thing with a boat in the river.
Yep. I mean, I'll go first, I guess. My statement is basically the same, I guess, as it always is. I'm a supporter of the hunt, I think it's imperative that we keep the numbers down. Michikvis, for instance, there's always people year-round talking about wanting to develop that, and if we end up getting it in a plan and we get something successful and we get financing to do something there, and we would have wished we would have probably controlled the geese prior to doing it. It takes years, obviously, to do it, to get the geese under control. Soccer fields are, I mean, I'm at soccer fields there all the time, there by Woodward, or no, the one there by the east campus, and there are geese there all the time. And then we send our children out to play, and they come home with what's left there. So I support, having never really seen a whole lot of other, other than the egg collection, never really seen anything else that does as well as the hunt, so I'll continue to support it as long as it's available.
Please have a couple of questions. What, I think, this is asked before, but I don't remember the answer, what becomes of the geese that are hunted, the meat, or is it?
They eat it.
I know. Do all the hunters keep it, or is there's any hog geese?
The hunters keep it. Not last year, but the year before, it just so happened that one of the places that have wild game dinner for fundraisers was the Knights of Columbus in Poles, and their freezers went down, so we gave almost all the geese to them. And if something like that came up, I'm sure, you know, those guys would be happy to. I sure wouldn't mind it. The geese, yeah, my son-in-law, he wouldn't have to clean them.
Like to see utilized, yeah, in that way.
It's utilized, nothing, they're not shot and discarded or thrown away or anything.
And how are the hunters selected?
Those are people that I trust and know that hunt, you know. Typically, when, Amber, when they, the first time when Dad set it up, it was huge. I mean, there was maybe a dozen hunt sites all over the river and everything, and they put out news releases and people, first come, first served kind of thing. That's expensive and harder to control, and so this is easier in respect of just, I know these people, I don't have to worry about them apparently shooting over their shoulder toward the street, you know, yada, yada. And it does cause some hard feelings, because I deal with those people all the time, because they're a goose hunting community, they're all my friends, you know, we hunt, I mean, you know, just on town, we hunt all over the state of Michigan, and it's just so hard to pick how you do.
I say, I've heard just from some other hunters that, you know, why are people excluded, you know, I mean, it can only have so many, but it has been something that's been expressed, I just wanted to ask about that.
So because we only do it like two days, you know, so really, you're looking at about 10 hours total of actual trigger time, so, and a lot of times, young people, I'd love to try it. Well, the idea is to get in there, get whatever geese you can get, and get out, and if you have people that aren't experienced in doing it, you know, you may not fare as well, so you've blown your opportunity to actually manage it and hunt it. That would be another reason.
Okay, thank you. I live close to the lake and walk quite a bit down by the lake, and I appreciate your efforts tremendously. It's like playing hopscotch, just to get down close to the lake sometimes. It really is, and it's very quiet, I don't think anybody is disturbed, it's very methodical, and I certainly appreciate that. And I think I agree with the mayor, it is something we need to foster and continue in years to come.
I'm going to echo everything both the mayor and Susan have said too. I think this, it's taken us a few years to get to the point where things were managed. This is, as I was telling Greg and Don earlier, this is the first year to this point that I did not have one complaint of so many geese down at a bike path, or a mess left behind, or the harbor being messed up, or whatever it would be. So it seems like this is working to the point where they're managed, and others have contacted me in other communities wishing they could do something very similar from some of the downstate people that I know that are involved in government as well. So I also do think this is the right thing to do, it is managing the numbers, and I think Don puts together a very, a good hunt that helps us manage it and control the population in the city.
Thank you, Don. I move we approve the goose hunt within the city of Alpena for the date stated.
Second. Noack?
Yes.
Walgore?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up in new business is the Evergreen Cemetery Garage Repair.
Back in September of 2017, the city received an open bid proposals for the Evergreen Cemetery Garage Repair. Complete the repairs and maintenance work to the existing maintenance building located within Evergreen Cemetery. Meridian Contracting came in, came in at a base bid of $55,126, in alternates addressing energy efficiency and building aesthetics of $26,708. At staff recommendation, council approved the contract with Meridian Contracting totaling $62,448 for the base bid and efficiency improvements foregoing the building aesthetics until funding could be established in the future. Thus, only the front side of the building was siding. Installation of remaining three sides of the new siding is the only work to be completed on the garage repair. During the initial construction period, the decision was made to purchase all of the siding materials needed to complete the project. Thus, we could avoid different lot numbers, different colors. Sufficient funding has been established in the cemetery budget for this fiscal year to complete this project. After contacting Todd Britton of Meridian Contracting, he has agreed to honor the original bid price of alternate one minus the previously paid materials. It is my recommendation as city engineer that contract modification number one be executed with Meridian Contracting Services for the proposed alternate number one price minus the previous purchased materials in the amount of $9,102.
The only question I have, I believe you answered, Rich, and is this going to finish off the project, and there's no other modifications to the garage? I have to go first.
No, so we finished up all the structural and efficiency work last year, and I said we just, we had to do the front because of the structural repairs we did. It was just the other three sides we held off on, so because we just didn't have enough funding.
I move we approve the contract modification with Meridian Contracting, the amount of nine one oh two.
Second.
Walgore?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Rich.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water and sewer litigation.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Walgore? Motion carried.